Because the little city in county, I would stop right near the city, but my mom's house is counted, but she can't see the city in county.
So now you're saying you can't speak your cause on that county?
No, it's like this.
I know, but we were the same address, this is my mom's address. Are you saying that this is city in county, for me she cannot, I do not speak?
He's been on the city portion, but not the county portion.
What if, Okonkwo Avenue is city in county? I promise you doesn't sound right that my mom, that had her drive though.
Is this whole road, she don't count it as, it's?
It's both.
Or she's sleeping on it, he's got an empty seat.
What he said?
He did have his empty seat in the back.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, it's not all of them, it's one city in county. This, I put it on at thirteen forty Okonkwo Avenue. This actually is, I actually live in the county, this is our home.
County?
You live in the county?
Correct.
That's the avenue that's deep way.
And it's because I didn't see it, right?
Yes, that's my mom has to sit previously in the meetings.
If you guys speak now on call your birthday, you want?
That'd be fine.
That'd be fine, by the speed.
That's fine, I love that.
Alright. See what we can do?
You've been real.
I will, even I will let you see this keeper. Like to say good evening to you, Ron.
Good evening.
Call the meeting, so. As always, we open up our meeting with prayer, does anyone wish not to participate in this part of the meeting? We ask that you remove yourself at this time, if not, then we'll go right ahead. Most awesome, amazing God, we thank you so much, y'all, for just allowing us to come, allow to this place to discuss the business of the city of Greensboro. We thank you so much for the citizens, y'all, that have shown up for sure their support and concern for this city. We ask you tonight, by the mere counsel, that you would give us the power of God to govern, do us the power to make the right decisions, y'all, not our decision, but your decision. We thank you now in your son Jesus' name, we do pray, amen and thank God.
Amen.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion?
Second.
It's been second and further discussion. No further discussion, although in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. You have this decision, thank you so much. Next is approval of minutes of October seventh, twenty twenty four, regular session. At this time, I entertain a motion and a second, and also give you time, council, if you have not, not so, should read over those things. This time, I entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October seventh, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been second and further discussion. No further discussion, although in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is over, this is the second, we're going to rezone at ten thirty, Pool Road, Greensboro, Georgia. Council received information on this in our last meeting, this is the second reason for the rezone, and this time I entertain a motion to approve the reason, to rezone, a motion and a second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been second and further discussion. No further discussion, although in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. You have this decision, thank you so much. Brings us down to new business.
Excuse me, could I speak on the rezone?
I didn't have a comment card waiting for me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You can fill out one and I'll eat you, I'll give you a cup of coffee.
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry.
Next on the agenda is new business, Nicole Chilton requests for a bill line permit on November twenty one, twenty twenty four. Talking ball and December nineteen, twenty twenty four, Joe Branson, swinging holiday show.
Yes, um, good evening, uh, first off, the November twenty first should actually be November twelfth. So I think the number's got, um, so our event talking ball is November twelfth and not November twenty first. But I do need a bill line license for November twelfth and December nineteenth. Uh, and all proceeds go, uh, benefit festival hall.
Counsel, you heard the request, come from Ms. Cole, entertain a motion and a second to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been second and a further discussion. No further discussion, although in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. City manager?
Yes.
Next on new business, Idol B, first reading request for rezone at thirteen ten Salomon Road, Greensboro, Georgia, from R two to A two, for expansion of green house. Is the applicant out here?
Yep.
You want to come on and explain a little bit? Explain to the council on what your request, why you requesting this rezone, I mean, just going upon just, you requesting to go from agricultural residential district to R one low dis- low density residential district, and the planning board did recommend approval.
Yeah, so essentially when we bought, uh, Pepstone's old property, it was two separate sections, one was already agricultural, and then the other one was just the house part, which is R two. Um, we're no longer using the residence, but we'd like to expand our existing greenhouses, um, in the future, so we want to make sure that we can do that. And I believe that the planning council also recommended we make it into one parcel instead of two different ones, I think there's an acreage requirement?
Yes, they, they did, um, recommend for approval, provided with the condition, it is combined with ten eighty one Pool Road. Pool Road, also known as parcel. Oh, my bad, my bad, my bad, my bad, my bad, I made the wrong thing, I'm sorry about that, um, my bad. But they did recommend those two parcels, um, did, um, to be, be, um, in the, um, 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 to, um, add it to, add it together. But I think I have spoken with, um, this, um, about this before, and I think, well, me and Councilman Smith have spoken about this, so, um, we recommend approval, um, of this request. So this is the first reading? Yeah. So we'll go down tonight, and we'll go down around next week.
Okay.
Any questions coming?
I, I have a question, um, I heard you saying, I'm, 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 for me, with this Pepstone, so where his residence, that, that, the house is still there? But I see that you already, already at Salomon Highway, so are you gonna be going to the left side or the right side of where his, that?
Where the house is, um, back behind it.
Back behind?
So it's kind of up on a hill, so we back down on the other side.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
City manager, you may as well stay in there.
Yes, sir.
Do you want a street favor?
My council, um, what you have before you, the city went out for bid for the annual L N E, um, paving, um, we had, um, for the following streets. Chapel Street, Railroad Street, Sycamore Circle, Cherry Street, Lower Richmond Circle, Robbins Circle, Chestnut Street, South Street, and Web Lake Drive. Um, we had, um, five, um, bids submitted, um, the apparent winner was, um, low bidder was, um, All Star Concrete, um, out of Louisville with a bid of seven hundred eighty one thousand, six hundred and thirty one, thirty nine dollars, um, and the high bid was, um, Magnum Paving, um, of, would have submitted a bid of one point two million, ASA paving, um, a million forty. And then, um, Pittman Construction was nine hundred fifty two thousand, two hundred fifty six dollars and ninety cents, and E- East Coast Parade, excuse me, they, they was at a million forty nine. So the parent low bidder is, um, All Star Concrete, the engineer, um, recommended that we award the bid to, um, All Star Concrete in the amount of seven hundred and, um, eighty one thousand, six hundred and thirty nine dollars. Most of these funds will come from T-Slotz and use the remaining, some of the, um, remaining, um, ARF funds.
Any questions, the comments for?
When we said name of the company again, we say?
All Star Concrete. Um, what's the balance in the T-Slotz and what other kind of road? The ARF fund. The ARF? ARF is over four hundred thousands, and I think T-Slotz, um, it is, um, what is the balance? Five, five fifty. So we're gonna just about clean both of these accounts out and do it? Well, hopefully, my plan was not only those, but, um, also, um, utilize some slots on it, so we're gonna hit it, we're gonna try to keep it up between all three. And this won't be, um, a one hit, like, once you're watered, we're not gonna cut a check and pay them all at a one time, it'll be as they, as they, um, complete the, um, as they probably complete the, um, work for it, because this is non-roads, and I don't know when the last time, you know, the city paid, but, um, these, this is, these are some of the roads that, um, was on the list, and hopefully, if our, um, all of this complete, we get certified, I did talk to the, um, grant coordinator for G-DOT, and, um, hopefully, we can get some of those funds that we didn't get back in the past, for, they gave a lot of extra supplemental, and so hopefully, they'll throw that, um, our way also. Hopefully, well, yep, hopefully, and I do think they will, uh, usually, when they tell you gonna do that, they'll, man, they usually stand by that word. So did they say they're gonna do it? Uh, he said, he said that if we get it in within, um, hopefully, before the end of this year, that's the greatest, greatest chance that, yep, we'll be able to get those funds. That's all I have.
Any more questions coming from? Yeah, I think it would be helpful, City Manager, um, I found out the specialist here, could you tell the council, um, what's the average deposit monthly on those two account?
It's like forty thousand for T-Slotz and around like a hundred for a slop.
I think a hundred and thirty, correct?
Yeah, they averaged it.
How many go out? Well, usually, with slops and T-Slotz, those are, those should be, um, really relegated to, to transportation projects, and the slops should be only relegated to capital projects. Shouldn't much be going out of, out of slops, at one time, it was almost near, few months ago, near a million dollars headed, headed that way.
To the slop?
Yeah, with slop, 'cause I think we, we got some items that are supposed to be coming back to us. And around where is it now? Yeah, around, what, what is the average slop, is it, um, seven? Or what is?
Right now is nine hundred.
Nine hundred dollars.
Nine?
Yes. Nine hundred thousand. So when this one's coming in, that'll be, that'll be back up to a million.
Counsel, you heard the request coming from City Manager, I'm taking motion and second to approve this request for street board.
Motion to approve? Second.
It's been second and further discussion. No further discussion, although in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. The proposal signed, signed. In new business coming from council, council more in new business?
Um, yes, I'm asking for an executive session, my wild, my open session, um.
Might be a personate matter?
Personate matter, yeah, for the second session, uh, but, hey, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and address some, uh, things that were said and posted on social media, uh, in this forum. Um, at the end of the day, uh, I'm gonna talk about my utilities, okay? I've been at my residence for thirty plus ye- almost thirty plus years, and I once have, uh, my utilities been interrupted. Uh, secondly, um, getting free utilities in the state of Georgia is against state law, uh, and I want to address my colleague and my community. Uh, Councilman Chris Moore has never been able to take, to take anything from the city, okay? Uh, that's what I have for my new business, but I do want to go into the second session for a personate matter.
City attorney, any new business? City manager, new business, council, council really, new business?
Nothing, sir, ma'am.
Council on the river, new business? Councilman Smith, new business?
No, sir.
Councilman Higgin?
Nothing.
I don't have any new business at this time. Reports, um, waste ward supervisor, Marcus Cunningham.
Good evening, Mayor, County.
Good evening, Mark.
Um, I'm gonna give you a quick, uh, recap of what's going on at Treatment Plant, everything is in really good shape, uh, we've collected our samples and submitted them for analysis to fulfill, uh, fulfill our PPL requirements from EPD. Those samples are of our influent and our treated effluent, which is our raw sewage and our discharge. Uh, the results of those samples were good, and they were, uh, tracked alongside our previous, uh, year sample. Our quarterly samples have also been completed, again, they're all within our permit limitations, our sour, sour samples, quarterly sour samples have been completed as well. We're should be getting ready, I think, next year to stop doing quarterly sour samples, because we won't be, um, we won't be, uh, uh, creating as many bio solids as we have in the past, what kind of put us over the limit was last year when we dredged that, uh, pond at, at the plant. Uh, things to come, we have our annual inspections coming, uh, next month, we go and inspect our free industrial users, uh, uh, their pre-treatment program. Uh, we will also collect samples of their effluent that they discharged to the treatment plant. This is done just to be sure that the samples that they submit to us every month in their monthly DMR are actually correct, uh, this is for comparison, for comparison's sake, uh, 'cause different companies, uh, different industrial users do different companies, uh, for their, uh, analysis. Uh, we have coming up our bio solids book, that's due, our report that's due, uh, in the end of, uh, January, so we'll have to get started on that. Where we compile all of our, uh, samples and reports that we've collected throughout the year, we're gonna compile all of those and submit them to EPA and EPD by the thirty first of January. And finally, I have a question, the city manager, I'm not sure where he went, uh, uh, to, uh, I'm there at the, the new store that they built out there near the treatment plant. Uh, we can't, there's no fence there as of yet, I'm not sure if the city's gonna be responsible for putting up a fence to keep patrons from just walking from where that store is onto the city property, right there adjoining their property is our land application site, so if we're spraying our treated effluent that we don't need to have their patrons just walking, 'cause somebody, you know how people like to walk their dogs or whatever at the store, we don't need them to be walking on the city property and potentially getting sprayed with our treated effluent, um, hmm, that's all, that's all I have for y'all this week, this time.
Any questions, Mr. Cunningham?
Well, thank you, good job, Mr. Cunningham, it's just me, uh, speaking, I think the mayor might have addressed that, I'm, I'm hoping, is it circuit? Is it?
That's circuit, I think, is what it is. Vera Veritas may be able to answer that question, I'm not sure.
She's here?
Oh, dear, oh, okay, we're good, well, oh, oh, okay, well, they may be able to answer that question alongside, uh, the city manager as to who's gonna be responsible for that, but we are gonna need some type of fence up to keep people from just, 'cause right now, there's, there's, out of the trees, which is the edge of the city's property, and then there's the store, people would just walk through the woods and they don't get that. So, I can get with the city manager and see what he says, and, uh, we can go from there.
Sounds good to me. Thank you so much.
Alright.
For the comments, I have two, for the comment cards, uh, Miss Toby Moore, she wanted to address that council about two utilities.
Yes, hey, y'all, I'm Toby Moore, the wife of Chris Moore, and I come to shine the light on one of your city officials, John Tavious, um, Smith. John Tavious, um, came up to the city hall and asked for our private information, and he proceeded after asking the city employee, um, about our information. The city employee told him that we have a water leak, which we already filed on our water, um, insurance claim. But he proceeded to proceed with the line that our water got cut off, which it didn't. This city employee had been working with me, and she knew, she telling me what to pay, but he proceeded to ask her about our personal information. Instead of him listening to what she said about us having a water leak, he went on to say, so that mean they don't pay their water bill, she said they are paying their water bill. But they're telling, we're paying with, they're paying, but we're telling them to pay, so he proceeded to go to social media with the same line saying that our water got cut off, our water never got cut off, but he told, he used it for his own personal gain, which is in your city code. And by saying, can I have my husband's code on? And according to the, uh, code of the city, he broke the law by taking it for his own personal gain, when they told him that we have a water leak, and he went on to say that we got our water shut off.
At the end of the day, he didn't follow protocol?
Yeah, he didn't.
And asked for a open records request.
He just come up here standing around asking for people's water bill, and the thing is this, if he gonna get all these people's water bill riding around in his car, is that ethical? That's not ethical. He should have, if he want to know anything about us and our water bill, he should have asked instead of going to social media. And then he, he really trying to tear Chris' character down, which he ain't gonna be able to do. Whatever Chris got going on, I am Chris's wife, if he got a problem with Chris's wife, or with Chris, and what Chris has done, what he did was moral. He need to address me, and the people who's asking him, tell them to come ask me, 'cause he have no answers for it. So I need something done about him, that first of all, we gonna look further than here, and he gonna have a city and a lawsuit going against the grain.
I think this is the first time we've actually had an ethical complaint, I guess we would, we would call it that, um, City Attorney?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
To go forward, I would, I would ask that we would form an ethical board, just in case anything else.
So under the city's ordinances, there's a requirement that I don't believe we followed in the past, that we appoint a potential ethics board. It's a procedure by which the council members put members on, of the public, onto a board in case a complaint has been filed. Uh, I don't know that a complaint's been filed yet, it has to be in writing, it has to be made to the city manager, um, but on the chance that there would be one, or even if there's not one, um, it may be appropriate now for the council to consider appointing, uh, members of this board in case you need to, quite frankly, we've never had one come up before, but it's something we should do at the beginning of the term and the end of it. Um, so, Mr. Mayor, if, if you're okay with it, I'll send to council the ordinance that explains the qualifications for this, for these appointees, and you'll give that to Mr. Hayes, and that'll put our, our board together, if we do get a complaint in the future, there's a procedure to follow with that, but the first thing we've gotta do is put that board together. So I'll get that to everybody, and when you have your selection, you'll give that to Mr. Hayes.
Sounds good.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney, I know you, I know you saying developing us an ethical board, but we have this problem right here before us now, you know, before we can even develop a board. I mean, I hope we don't just take what Miss Moore said and set it on the table, not, not, not look into it, because we'll create, create a bigger problem if we don't look into it before we get the ethical board, I would love to see that, but, you know, it didn't came before us. Let's, let's deal with what we gotta deal with, lawful, lawful, as long as we can do it lawful, I, I don't want nobody to treat us wrong, I want everybody to be treated fairly, but.
Well, to address, uh, the speaker, um, a couple of things, one, um, the ethics ordinance does have to be in writing, so there's nothing that stops anybody from filing it afterwards. So you could still, in, in other words, you're not, you're not gonna not take action on it, you do need to have it in writing, though, it's gotta be submitted to the city manager. I think there's other things that were brought up in the comments, too, that may not even just include the ethics ordinance, there may be other things this council might want to do, not specifically to address the specific issue, but maybe some of the broader ones, for instance, um, access to, excuse me, access to city records, um, how you might handle other ethics issues in the future, uh, but with respect to what happened, um, if you put the ethics board in place, then that can be put in writing, and the process can move forward, so in other words, you won't, you won't be not taking action on anything that's been said or could be said.
And, and, uh, uh, while talking that, uh, thank you for that, uh, Mr. Attorney. So our citizens, I know that's unethical, we don't need to operate like that, not with people's personal business. That's, that's any citizen in the city of Greensboro. I'm sitting here as city council, uh, I'm asking city attorney, mayor and Mr. Hayes, let's, let's get this correct now. Let's not let this sit on the table and fester even more than it is, let's, let's treat everybody right, fairly. Lawfully.
Yes.
Let's do what we need to do, cause we was elected by the peoples. We weren't elected just by the board, we was elected by the peoples that look out for the city, the residents of the city of Greensboro, not us, we can't, take, take any of that different peoples. I just had to say this, thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Next, Mr. Ronald Champion, lead talking, ten thirty one Pool Road.
Everybody doing they.
Good, Chance.
Good, 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 I think I probably know everybody here. I'm pretty sure I do, my name is Ronald Champion, I'm on eighteen twenty E Broad Street, uh, concerning the rezoning over here on, uh, the property, uh, I don't know what the price is, how far they on got and how close they get to the, what they want, I just wanna dread my concerns and first of all, I'm not getting progress. I like to see people get new, new homes, new houses, that's, that's how we develop our town, city and our county. Uh, my only is that make sure that the property is protected. The water is, uh, is the issue. Because you had looked at it, you know, you found on, at the zone, I think he said, Miss Greenwood, what about twenty two houses, they gonna try to put down a third on, over acre?
That's what's for families.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Well, that mean that you have families there, when you have families there, that could mean that you gonna have children, you know, what, how, what is the protection of that water? See, right now, if you have, we got a lot of wildlife over there, you got beavers, you got otters, you got water monsters, plenty of them over there. You also got water, water snakes, you also got coyotes and beetles over there, so, the answer, you got the wetland over there, you know, in front of it. Uh, then when we get ready to develop it, which I know I can't do anything by stopping, I don't wanna stop it, I just wanna make sure that, that property of surrounding that sub, to the building be protected because the water, you know, or right now, everybody know when it rain, it'll all pool and pool road flood. So once you disturb that land over there, uh, get rid of all them trees and all them trucks, that water gotta go somewhere. You know, and, 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 is it gonna be a retaining pond, we put that hold that water? Then if the retaining pond put that in, is it gonna be, well, is it overflowing, is it overflowing to the pond? It's had to be a retaining screen put there to make sure that no mud or water get in the, get in there. And I, I request that, I, I like to have an eight foot fence put up, keep the kids from, cause you know, once kids see water, they gonna get, they gonna get agitated. They gonna wanna get in that water. And who gonna be, if something do happen, who gonna be responsible? Is it gonna be the subdivision or is it gonna be me? You know, cause I own the water, the water right belongs to me, it don't belong to nobody else. Now, over a period of time, they had livestock over there, where Ms. Flamro, they was staying over there, Ms. Damnette were in the lane, but over a period of time, that when the animal were drinking the water, that hoop, knocked the bank away. I figure about twenty two inches of, what am I measuring, about twenty two inches of the waters is over the property line there because we know animal water were drinking water, they about four feet long, something like that, but that is over the property line. Uh, only thing I'm just, just that I want the board to just look at, make sure that everybody is protected on point from A to Z. It has to be, cause that water is, is the whole issue about why the subdivision been built there. Ain't been built there because people wanna build houses. It built there because that water gonna be attracted to people that their housing there. That is a, you know, that's, that's, that's a goal mine to a lot of people when they see water. So all I suggest that, ask that, you know, the board just look at it and make sure that everybody is protected, not just me. You got Mr. Willis, Mr. Self, you know, Mr. Hill, all them around the area, or that Mr. Matt also over there. It's just that when that water start moving and turning, you know, make sure they turning the right way. You don't turn them, you know, cause it's an EPA regulation, if any, any mud get in that pond there. Everybody understand it, that's EPA, any kind of erosion. You know, I just wanted to be protected and I thank y'all for y'all time, appreciate it, thanks, sir, thank you.
At this time, I entertain a motion down to second, going to executive session, one person there matter?
Motion to approve.
Can I ask a question right quick before you guys, I know you said the comments were supposed to be based on the agenda, but at what point do they intend to go back to where the audience can make comments, just questions in general? Because if something discussed at this meeting that we have a question about, when would we get a chance to ask that question?
See, it happened to me, at this time, I entertain a motion down to second to go into executive session.
Motion.
Second.
It's been second and further discussion. No further discussion, although the paper letter be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much, go ahead, listen.